We're unmuted.
Getting into. Um, we know.
We'll be back in session, folks.
I know we're gonna talk about it, so.
Yeah.
Corey, did you wanna?
Corey.
Yeah, so I think we were, we were having the discussion, sorry, Corey Ellis, nine one one director of Benzie County, we're having the discussion about the longevity, the life of this expansion as far as looking into the future. As far as from my perspective for nine one one, the answer is yes. Um, the intent is going to be to have four full functioning positions for dispatch. Right now, we have two and a half. We have one that. And what works? Um, so we have two and a half. Uh, so we're gonna move to four. As far as looking at surrounding counties and other agencies, how much their population is and how they service for that population, we are fitting right in line with the number of positions. And the expected increase in population based on the season here. So. As far as nine one one goes, yes, um, we have a long life in the square footage for this expansion.
So Corey, we didn't have a chance to talk about this the other day, but if you look down the road, what's the likelihood of the state recommending regionalization? Of central dispatch versus each community having it? Am I not right that at the UP, they only have one central dispatch?
Uh, no, they. They somewhat consolidated in the UP, they, they. Several years ago, the state really looked at consolidating a lot of their services. Um, and an unofficial. Comment on that, it appears the state's going back on that. Uh, the perfect example is the Traverse City State Police Post opening back up. Uh, the state, I believe, is starting to realize that completely regionalizing is not efficient, is not the way to go. I have not heard the conversation as far as in the nine one one industry of true regionalization coming back into play. Um, there's a lot of things that would have to be worked out and there's a lot of. Instances where it was tried and it's not working very well. Um, so it, to some extent, we are. Consolidated, whereas there's only one in this county, whereas in Wayne County, I don't know how many there are. Exponentially more than us.
At least ten.
Yeah, there, there's a lot and they have a lot to deal with down there. So. I don't believe there's been any conversation at a state level to move towards regionalizing again. Um, it's not. It's not gone well so far.
So there's no reason to step back from this and. Uh, wait for the state to make a different decision. You think that, that right regionalization is not probably not gonna happen?
I, there's no indication that it's going to, so that would be my opinion is that it's not worth waiting for them to. To provide that.
You agree?
I've heard not one rumbling of regionalization of. Nine one one. Not at MAC, not at Naco. Yeah, I've not heard one person make that comment.
Okay, all right.
And I think the local department heads, uh, emergency services would probably fight that because you lose. Um. Familiarity with the area. I mean, in. If you go to a regional one.
Yeah, knowing very little about your business, I would think technology would overcome some of those obstacles. But what I'm more interested in is if we're investing in this now, are we gonna unwind this in five years? I just wanna make sure that doesn't happen, which will bring me to my last question, probably more for you, Katie. So we're gonna be bringing emergency services down there. Um. What are we gonna do with the smooth space that we create? Um, once this build out is done?
I have a whole idea. So, um. Obviously, we have a lot of tight spaces around the campus and there's a lot of people who are in somewhat shared workspaces, um, specifically recycling and equalization are kind of on top of each other than building. MSU extension is in a closet. Um, and so. With these changes and Rebecca moving over to the lower level, my, um, thought would be to move recycling into her current area, recycling coordinator. Move equalization down, move building down, put MSU extension in that area, which provides us another storage space that. Is really meant to be a storage space, being that it's kind of a closet area. Um, and then there's other changes that. I have lots of ideas to move people around and put them in more appropriate spaces. As far as up the hill, the sheriff maybe would have a better. Um, thought on how he's gonna utilize that current space that their central dispatches in now. Um. I know that they've been talking about various ideas, I'm not sure the direction they're gonna go for that specific space in the sheriff's office, but for this building, I got lots of plans.
So Katie, it's, this whole thing started, we were talking about the probation office.
Yep.
About space planning.
Yep.
I didn't hear anything you say. That said, we're gonna address that issue at the probation office.
So they don't want Rebecca's space now. I've already met with Sean a few times. I have plans in my email that we've been working through. Um, they don't want Rebecca's space. They want different space that we're working through right now and we intend to, um, hopefully go out to, um, bid to start that project, maybe later this summer.
Terrific.
Yep.
That's all I got.
I wanna just follow up on one of your comments, Art, and when it comes to population of the county with the square footage of the smallest county in the state. Well, sixty seventh in size with population, um, of the eighty-three, but geographically. So between the water and the state property, we really don't have a lot of. I mean, there's residential property still available, but you can't build on state property and you can't build where the water is, so. That consumes a good part of what Benzie County's made up from. So I don't see our seventeen thousand five hundred in. And. Folks that live here going to forty or fifty thousand by any means, just because. There's still a lot of farmland, which is hopefully gonna stay family oriented and. There's water and state property and I mean, it's, it's just unbuildable. So we do have a pretty good share of. Properties that. Aren't gonna be affected by housing.
Yeah, I, I agree. There's limited space to grow for. Residents to build, but I'm looking at also the influx for the tourists. That continues to grow and grow and grow and. We, that's what emergency services is also sponsoring or supporting is.
Sure.
Is all of that visitors.
Well, and that's. That's been Benzie County for as long as any of us can remember. I mean, for some, and that, that have been here forever. I mean, I wasn't here forever and neither were you, but. Um, some of us came sometime afterward. Yeah, you know, so you've been here forever. Which is a long thing.
Yep.
But thank you. Get back to whatever.
So with big projects like this, um, two of the biggest things are staying within budget and on a timeline. Um, the company that's being recommended, um, do they have a reputa- reputation for? Doing those two things?
Absolutely, yeah. I, we've just finished up the Grand Traverse Regional Land Conservancy Headquarters Project in Traverse City area and they were on budget and on time when other products in the area were actually. Woefully behind schedule and everything else and people were using the supply chain as excuses and everything else, but it's in their best interest to actually get done and get out because they don't make. Money by hanging around for longer than they need to. So really, it's in their best interest to go ahead and be efficient and get the project done. So no, I'm very confident that that should not be an issue.
Appreciate that. Thank you.
I think if there's gonna be a timeline thing, it's not going to be with the construction. It's going to be possibly with. Anything that goes on inside.
Yeah.
Inside the room, which is not gonna be Grand Traverse Construction's issue. That's. The technology, the, anything that has to be brought in from elsewhere, but.
Yeah.
We're talking about cement and bricks and doors and windows.
Yeah.
You know, that's.
I'm watching closely the bond issue with high school and.
Oh, sure.
Uh. The, the things that they're coping with and just hoping that this, this project goes. Like that one has.
Yeah, it seems sort of like the last couple of school projects in the area, for whatever reason, seem to be having more trouble, but, um. It's really, like I said, the only thing that they were concerned about in our post-bid interview was the generator. That was the only thing that was, I mean, everything's taking six to eight weeks or whatever, but if we, I think part of what they would like to do and what they've done in past projects is. They also like to get things ordered. So once we get a contract together, they can go ahead and get some of these things ordered. They're not starting till August. That gives them a month. You know, ahead of the game of four weeks of, ahead to be able to order things. So it's positive too, so. Uh, and I think spatially, the, you know, the amount of space that we're gaining for the essential services, both, you know, for dispatch, but also every time I've been down there. We're doing measuring and design work and everything else, there's always trainings going on. There's, we're enhancing not just dispatch, but there's, it's affecting several departments, which is very positive for your county, so.
Well, Grand Traverse Construction is one of the companies that have been around.
Forever.
I'm. Late sixty seventies.
Yeah, they did, they did this.
So.
Yeah. Yeah, I mean, I was working with them in early eighties, so. And that's only forty years ago.
And Chair, I do have a couple of questions, if I may. Uh, one, and this is education for myself and also the public.
Sure.
Is there a warranty on workmanship? That is written up with us, not on supplies, but the actual.
Yeah, we, we actually. Do a two-year warranty. Most companies would do a one-year warranty. It seems crazy that you buy a car and you get a three-year warranty and you could do a building and you get a one-year warranty. So we always write in a two-year warranty with our projects just because. We just wanna get the most bang for the buck that we can, but it also is important to work with local people because. Again, if there's a problem, their offices are not that far away, so it's just kind of be, that's why we really like encourage regional contractors to be used and unfortunately. Because the scope and scale of these larger projects. Really truly local people cannot get bonded and so forth, but I think that AJ's is. A local company that's doing the excavating, so they, they try to use local folks as well and that helps to just. People be responsible, so.
Okay, cuz that is a concern because in the past, there has been. Workmanship that. Has maybe gone down easier than it should have, you know?
Uh.
But so I just wanted to ask that question. The second thing is, um, in your allowances, you said you had. There's item number three, seventy thousand. For specialty furnishings or central dispatch and number six, a hundred ninety-six for radio systems and support and things. Are, is that all new or are we doing combinations and adjusting? Are we updating?
Um, two of the dispatch councils are being reused and then there's two new ones, so that would reflect, uh, uh, two brand-new dispatch councils. And then as far as the radio systems. Some of that is moving downstairs from upstairs. Currently, some of that resides in the armory as well as in the. Um. Off the dispatch space right now, so that's, there's a IT room that's being created downstairs, which some of that stuff is going to move down into, so we're really shifting and moving some things around, so. Um, there's, it's a pretty obviously critical. Type of operation that's happening with that technology and thus the cost reflected in that.
Okay, so no interruption in, uh, operations and services?
There's gonna have to be some gymnastics to make sure everything's covered.
Good.
Yep.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Gary?
I'm gonna. Want this squelched one way or another. Um. We have no project manager on this. Uh, we have a company and I'm not blaming anybody, but I happen to be through the mess with the Maples. And that's been a concern for me. Because protecting the county is my concern.
Mm-hmm.
And making sure that everything's above board. And if something happens, we don't end up in court again. Uh, that was a mess. Can you? Reassure me. That without a project manager, we have, cuz to me, that's a third-person oversight.
Mm-hmm.
And. Is that something I should be considering? Because of what's happened in the past, I am considering it. Which is. Kind of giving me a hard time to vote on this. So I appreciate your input on this.
Sure, I, our job is to represent the interests of the county, so we work on your behalf as the project manager. We're intimately familiar with the drawings because. Our team and our engineering team. Produce those drawings. We don't have any relationship. With the contractor monetarily, we have good working relationship with all the contractors we work with, but we are looking out for the county because you is, you are who pays. Our team's bills, so that's who we work for. So we don't have any incentive to not work for you because. We wouldn't have been around for twenty-plus years in this region doing work if we didn't operate in such a way. So if you talk to like the. Um, Conservancy project that just finished again was our team, but then the contractor through a bid process was Grand Traverse, that was. Upwards of over ten million dollars worth of work and I think if you talk to them as a reference, they'd be very happy to tell you what a good. Project they had and it was very complicated as well. Many buildings, greenhouses, different things happening, so, um, and we've worked on school projects and so forth around the area, so it just. I guess there's a, there's two approaches to doing it. You can do what's called a construction management approach where you have that kind of project manager being that third party you might be referring to. But on recent projects, we've seen too that there's a cost benefit to go to a general contractor, which is typically how it used to be done. And on a project that's of this scale, less than. Ten million dollars really is what our cutoff is for project. You know, you're going into a construction management kind of operation. We try to do more. General contractor projects because I think we feel it's a better value for the owner. We have one contract. With a general contractor who has to be responsible. So if there is issues, you're not having to go after. Multiple contracts, like you might have if you went to a CM kind of. Situation, so, um, I guess our experience is that we haven't had issues with it. We've been very successful with this delivery method and I don't see any reasons for concern on this project.
I just wanna add in there too, again, Ray's company is not the contracting company. You, we hired him separately to design and. And. Give us all oversee this whole project, so we're paying him separately. He's not the contractor.
Yeah, he's a completely separate contractor.
And I, I've been working, Katie and I and, and the sheriff and Corey have been working closely with him to get the needs of the county and it's still gonna be my. Baby, I guess, to make sure that we're, we're staying where we need to be and, and, and talking directly with Ray about anything that we might. See on the ground level because. Project completed is important. So, uh, again, uh, referencing like some budget questions. Really know that we had like a seventy thousand dollar allowances for the furnishings. I already know that that's under budget, the court came in and. Or something like that. So we're constantly making sure that we stay diligent and that's just gonna be.
And any, and just to be clear, any unused allowances would be credited back the county too. So it's like if. We have a situation where the furniture comes in at sixty-six thousand, we will get a credit back for anything that is not used. So those allowances are. Meant to cover. The other, other thing I will say though is, you know, we always encourage the county or our clients to carry a contingency because especially we're working with an existing building. If we find something, which we will find something. You know, there's just, there's gonna be things that come up. It's construction, so it's like we always would encourage you to have a contingency in place. Typically, people will say ten percent. I think five percent's reasonable. We typically see our contingency usage coming in at. A half a percent to one percent. So I don't, we feel good about the drawing package we have. Um, you know, we're not perfect. There may be things that come up, so you should, you know, have a protocol in place, whether it's. A certain dollar limit I see often happen with, you know, public entities and so forth that we say. If there's, if it's over X amount of dollars of change order, then you bring it to the. You know, board, however you all wanna do that, but that's very customary to see that kind of thing done too.
And the reason that it's set up as allowances rather than already in the bid is we didn't go out to get. Contract bids for our radios because we already have a preferred vendor that, that needs to incorporate our current ratings. We didn't go out for bids for security because we already have a security system that we would just use the existing TKS system. Cuz we, we wouldn't want some other vendor to tie into our current system. So those were allowances to preferred vendors that we had. Um, already set aside that we do business with and have systems engaged with. That's why it was, it looks like that as opposed to having those, um. Put in the bed as. And.
Sounds like quite a balancing act, but I appreciate it. Thank you. Uh, I just, I just wanna be real clear cuz I share Gary's concerns and I do develop my, myself and I understand the value of a project manager. Maybe they haven't labeled you that, but Ray, I was left with the impression that you would be seeing. The project to completion, working on the county's behalf, not working on the contractor's behalf.
That is a hundred percent correct, absolutely. And we conducted the bid process accordingly as well as a very. Transparent apples-to-apples situation. And like I said, that's why we ended up having bids within a ten percent grouping because. We had good drawings, we have the information, everybody's bidding the same thing. It's really comes down to. What people self-perform and things like that is what the difference, but to answer your question, yes, that we are working for Benzie County. Here. That's what we've mentioned before. And through the completion of the job.
So you'll recall, um, about a month ago, you all authorized the phase two of Ray's contract. Phase two was him to be the project manager, so we did accomplish that task that you're concerned about. That, uh, you authorizing phase two was him carrying out the project on our behalf.
I just don't want any type of conflict of interest involved.
No, he, he's working for us specifically.
If it happened in the past, happened, but it was not good.
But if we don't operate in an ethical way, we won't get people to bid our projects, quite frankly, and the fact that we had three people come out in a time, actually four, the other one just wanted another week and we didn't have a week to give them, but. The bottom line is, if we didn't operate ethically and above board, people wouldn't do our work, period. And we're. On the opposite side of things, we're able to get people to bid our projects, which we're very. Happy to have that be the case.
Being timely is also helpful, right?
And it helps consultants for sure.
You see, do you have any vision that? Or? Can you see any hiccups?
No, at this point, it seemed to be pretty straightforward and clean and I would expect it would, you know, obviously when we are doing the switchovers and everything, it's gonna be, you know, there's gonna be some complicated things happening, but we'll work with staff and make sure that.
Technology thing is.
Yeah.
Understandable, but fortunately, they have two stations up and running right now and. Can hopefully flap that in the middle of the night or something.
And early on, it was looked at to do in addition, all these other things. It just, it would have been a much more expensive project to go that route. So what we're doing is the most cost-effective approach and we're meeting the needs of the county accordingly. So I think res- fiscally responsible that.
Any other questions?
I just wanna say it's refreshing to get to this point. Rebecca Hubers is working on this. It's fair to say years. We look like going outside the campus and this is then we settled on and it's exciting to be at this. And I wanna give you. Commendation for.
Absolutely.
Board the whole way. Thanks. The nine-on-one advisory board had back, you know, we had subcommittees and things going on. We looked at it off-campus and, and I do believe we've come up with the most. Reasonable, cost-efficient and, um. This, it, it'll work out best the, the way it is. There, there were other needs outside of that that we couldn't be able to address. Here as well as accommodate needs of the sheriff's office. He's gonna get more space, you know, you're gonna get more space here. It'll, it'll make more sense.
They're gonna raise your rent, is he?
It's your building, so it's yours.
As much as we can.
It's your building, so you get to raise the rent if you want.
Ray, Ray, that bond, is that a completion bond?
Uh, it's a performance and labor bond, yes.
Yeah, so if something happened, they couldn't finish the job. Uh, we could step in, have somebody else finish it. And the monies would be available.
Correct. That's how it is. Knock on wood, I've never had that happen, so I don't plan it to happen here, so.
Me either.
Good. That being said, if somebody that would like to make this motion.
I'll make the motion of the Board of Commissioners accepts the project bid and authorizes construction contracts with the Grand Traverse Construction for the lower-level expansion project. In a total amount of one hundred.
One million.
One million eight hundred and eighty thousand with the funds available in the central dispatch fund balance, general fund. Fund balance, American Rescue Plan Act funding and CARES Act funding. Recognized as general fund dollars and the delinquent tax revolving fund, such contracts subject to approval as to their substance by administration and their form by legal counsel.
It's a good motion, wasn't it?
That's an awesome.
Hmm.
Support.
There's a motion and support. Is there any further discussion?
Yes, go ahead, Gary. I just wanted to thank Katie and Michelle. And Rebecca for funding this completely. It's huge to me.
Hmm.
It was that this organization is, especially you folks. Are really diligent with the public's money, so thank you. Rebecca, does that drain your surplus to do this project? Will there be more?
Uh.
I will.
Corey.
No, it does not. No, it does not.
There's a fund balance, yeah, for operations assessed.
So central, so the funding that I took from the central dispatch fund balance will leave a twenty-five percent fund balance that he will, um, have. Same with general fund fund balance. That's about the max we can take to keep a twenty-five percent fund balance for general fund. Um, so no, I, we kept twenty-five percent for the fund balances.
So all that stuff that looked like access in previous years was us saving up the divide funding for this. I mean, in little, little increments because we always still have to operate, but. And anytime that three-dollar surcharge looked excessive. It was, um, anything extra was. Worth this.
Okay, thanks, Corey.
Go to the discussion.
I think I would like to add, I would like to add the, a discussion of the, uh, delinquent DTRF funds for this project, um, study session this afternoon. I think there are a couple of aspects of that we need to talk about. Um, it doesn't impact what we're doing today, but. Conversation, I feel like we should have.
That would've. Roll call, please.
Sauer?
Yes.
Cunningham?
Yes.
You're not?
Yes.
Marky?
Yes.
Night?
Yes.
Roloff's?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Thank you all.
Um, great, thank you. And thank you all. Shacey, you're right. Keep that going, right?
Yeah, and I'll send them to Matt. That's all.
So we did have a ten fifteen presentation. I don't know if I'm gonna do that now.
Mr. Malon?
Um, actually, Ed was first and then Tim. Feasibility study, then broadband.
Good.
Wait.
Ed.
Morning, I'm Ed Hoogterp. I'm Chair of the Benzie County Parks and Recreation. Commission. Uh, we're gonna talk a little bit about the, uh, Parks Director Feasibility Study. Um, you have copies of this before you. I think you had them in your packet too. Um, this was proposed by the Parks and Recreation Commission. Last year, you funded it with an allocation of about fifteen thousand dollars in the current year budget. And the, uh, study was developed by Networks Northwest. The, uh, Parks and Recreation Commission got our first look at this yesterday. Uh, we do see tremendous benefits from the, this potential position of a Parks and Recreation Director, and we would like to pursue the con- concept. With the Board of Commissioners as part of your budgeting and planning process. Uh, the, uh, as part of this study, Networks Northwest interviewed park and recreation officials in four counties. They surveyed. Benzie County townships and other stakeholders. They reviewed the national literature. Developed sample job descriptions, organizational charts and budgets. And created a GIS-enabled database of recreation and cultural sites in Benzie County. Um. Based on this study and our ongoing discussions, we believe that responsibilities for a county parks director would probably include. Uh, communication, collaboration and database management with other park and recreation providers in the county. Um, a big. Amount of grant writing and administration, which has been an issue everywhere. Uh, management of county park properties, recreation programming, planning and priority of future needs. Volunteer recruitment and organization, revenue development and, uh. And, uh, operation and, and, uh, scheduling of, of special events. Um, as you review the study, a few things that I'd like to point out, one, um, you were, you were discussing population a few minutes ago on page five. Of this, there's a study from Networks Northwest. Which says that, uh, although our. Census population is about seventeen thousand on any given night in June, July and August, there are sixty thousand people sleeping in Benzie County. Um, that, just an, an interesting side effect. Um. The other things in here, the responses from stakeholders, which are listed in, in the appendix about the last fifty pages of this, were generally very positive with, with a couple of exceptions. Um, most cited collaborations and grant assistance as the likely need and, and benefits that, that they saw. Um, job descriptions on pages twenty-six to thirty-four are pretty comprehensive. But if you look at salary proposals on pages twenty-two to twenty-five. They are prob- they're based on findings from other counties. And they're probably a little above. What I say a little above, um, what, what the Benzie County pay scale is, so something to think about. And the organizational chart on page twenty-one. Certainly would need to be revised to meet the situations in, in Benzie County. Um, the, uh, recreation and inventory. Recreation inventory and GIS mapping. Is, is a great start. It'll be a tremendous planning tool when it's done. Um, for example, I. A, uh, park operator in inland township, for example, will be able to look at this and say. You know, how many pickleball courts are there in surrounding townships? Do we need, you know, that, that sort of thing, which you can't do right now will be very easy, but that needs more work and, and more editing. The, uh, intent of that is eventually, and hopefully as part of the, um, county, um, revisions of your website is to, to place this online as an interactive map. So that the public can, can look at it and. and um see what what's available, you know, where where is there a rental pavilion that's that's open in my weekend? Um, if I want to sign my kid up for youth soccer, how do I do that? To put all this in one place and uh um more work to be done on that, but that but that's certainly the intent. Um, the uh in in this, in this study, we would have liked to see a little more discussion of potential funding streams. Um, that will be an important early consideration for director and for the Parks and Recreation Commission. Um, any plan should should consider potential near term savings on upcoming needs such as the uh revision of our five year Parks and Recreation Plan and the Railroad Point Management Plan. Um, and finally, you know, we know you haven't had a chance to really digest this ninety page report. Um, so we come without a specific recommendation today. But we're very positive about this and we see it as a beginning of a discussion. Uh, we believe we will get somewhere and we definitely want to pursue the concept with the Board of Commissioners and uh open for questions, comments, brickbets, whatever.
Jump in with a couple of questions. Ed, how does, uh, I'm looking at right now this box outlining the collaboration across the county. Um, you've had conversations with other planning commissions within the county, is that right?
With uh with 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 planning in 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 our county?
Yeah, like El Myra Township, um Lake Township.
We've to 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 some extent, yes, often on on other on other topics, but we we tried to kind of stay back from this from this study because because the intent here is to have a total third party look at this rather than me going out and trying to sell the idea to another um to another. But but what what we what we hear about about collaboration is uh is is that fir- first of all, there's there's the the ongoing question of of maintenance, you know, are are there synergies that 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 you can do, you know, for example, do we need, do we need ten small lawn mowers or or could we buy one commercial lawnmower and uh and contract with somebody to to do to do parks in multiple townships? Um, there there is the uh the the planning issue and the the thing that comes up most of the time is is uh since so much is dependent on grant funding that that what can we do to work together on on grants, both in terms of planning them and and in terms of uh you know, administering a grant. As you know, sometimes you apply for a grant in great fear that you might get it and what are you going to do then? Um, because there's nobody to to take care of it. So so that that's a big part. Another interesting thing that that's come up a couple of times is the question of um special events and and calendars um that volunteers handle all this stuff. Now I have uh Commissioner Sauer, I think is spending a a huge amount of time with, for example, the 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 trail and the uh and the Iron Man and and events that take place on on there that it just takes a whole lot of time and work to to do these things. And and these are things that a professional could potentially do and take some of that burden off off volunteers while also coordinating it so that uh so that we know that that we don't plan one event running through the village of Beulah and then discover that uh there's a uh, there's a sidewalk sale that day and and our our marathon shouldn't run down the main street. So that that seems to be the kind of coordination that 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 we're interested in and uh and and we have to say, on the other hand, at this point, nobody wants to give up any responsibility. I mean, so so no, nobody's saying take over our parks. Um, and 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 one of the one of the key things that comes from from the uh discussions in here with with other county parks departments is whatever you do, don't duplicate things that are being successfully done now.
There you go.
I know, don't, don't go saying, you know, well, we need to, we need to create something that's already existing and running well. So the example here is that uh um MSU Extension runs youth soccer. And as long as they want to do it and they're doing it well, we shouldn't be trying to create a new youth soccer thing. Now, the issue with volunteers and people kind of off uh off their core belief with that or their core uh responsibility is that continuity becomes a huge issue because we have things, um, a good example is the is the ice rink in Benzonia. When when Dr. Pace took care of that, everything ran smoothly. Um, when 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 he passed away, um, figuring out how to do that has has been an issue. And and so that kind of continuity that requires some kind of professional leadership um is is really important that we don't want to take away the work that volunteers are doing. I mean, it's so important, but something needs to needs to keep things on track because volunteers, as we know, come and go and get burnt out and age out and also. So that that's really the sort of the the key to the collaboration and and working together. And the other part is is, as as I said, sort of the planning that when we when we get a uh but when we get that database complete and if there's somebody overseeing, updating and communicating that, it'll be a tremendous planning tool for all the for all the townships as well. And you know, and we we know that uh um, we 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 need to prove the value. Uh, there, but there there are some folks who are resistant at listening to anything the county says. Um, but uh we 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 feel that that kind of collaboration can work and it's and it's also one of the key parts of extending our services to the whole county rather than concentrating on the what what I think of as as the old, our old population centers of of Benzonia and Crystal Lake. So um, I don't know if that answers your question or not.
It it starts to.
Yeah.
I have another one, but I want to give others an opportunity to.
When did you receive the ability?
I, the uh about Thursday, Thursday or Friday and
Met last night, right?
And then we met last, the 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 copies we first got last night.
So the committee itself needs time to digest what's been proposed. Is that a fair statement?
Yes, yeah, we've, obviously we've been in discussion of it and kind of knew it was, but but yeah, our 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 sense was that that both both we and you needed to better understand what was in there. We understand from the administrator that you've got some uh budget discussions coming up in in July. And so we would, we would, you know, if 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 appropriate, have a more specific recommendation at that time. But but at this point, we're saying, you know, we definitely want to pursue this. We're very positive about it, but but as far as coming to you and saying, you know, we should do exactly this, um, we want to have that conversation with you.
So there's a lot of priorities in the county. We talk about economic development. We're talking about parks. We're talking about staff issues. Um, you talked in in this report, it it spoke briefly on potential revenue generation. I'm assuming part of that is the grant writer role. Uh, but can you give me in more detail where that revenue would come from and how we'd actually pay for this position?
Um, again, look, looking at the other, the other counties in in general, the this, these administrative positions are typically general fund um positions. Now, there are there are some that there are some that have a millage. Um, but you know, that's a that's that's another issue. The um, the funding streams could could very likely, you know, what what we'd look at is is uh fun funding streams that cover operations as opposed to administration. So um, we could, we could potentially um use some kind of a fee structure for for use of the the new kayak launch at at uh at the outlet. Um, there are, there are potentials long term to uh to to meld in some some of the uh donations that go to specific things, Point Betsy, the trail, um, the uh railroad point in into into covering some of the overhead of a park operation. Um, there are extremely long term, the the state would always like to turn over their state forest campgrounds to local operation, which which can be a revenue generator, although it needs to have a lot of thought go into it before before such things are done. Um, so the uh um the the, I I guess the the most likely revenue streams are are fee based operations. Um, and and that the the reason we would have liked to have seen more on that is because that's a tough call, that what things are strictly a county service and what are should be fee based for an individual who's taking advantage of that. Um, those are, those are tough questions, but but those are possible revenue streams. And and again, that was, we we would, we would have liked a little more out outside uh um analysis of 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 what's available in terms of of uh um funding these these things long term. So that that I mean, that that's really what we're looking at that. And and uh we may, we may even go back to Networks Northwest um informally and say, you know, what are what are other people doing? How how could this work? Um, we, and and we will, we will continue. We've had some early discussions with with Manistee County, who's, you know, probably going a little bit different direction, but 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 we're interested in the in any kind of synergies and and uh sharing with with other counties. And and we, and you know, and and we are aware that uh that you all have a budget to meet. Um, and and that, you know, there that there will be discussions of of, you know, how how can, how can we serve multiple needs with uh with a limited number of of but of of funds and we hope to be involved in those. We can um I I believe we can defend the need and the benefit of of this position. But uh, you know, we also understand that, you know, you've you've got many needs and and budget considerations. So we want to be, you know, part of that. And if and if, you know, if if where we end up is that this is the beginning of of a of a process that's going to take years to do, um, that uh, you know, talking about your uh your uh nine one one, you know, it takes a lot of years to get where you need to be. And we're, you know, we're, we're here for the whole ride. Um, but but we but we do think, and and this study study shows, I believe, that that there's there there'd be plenty for this person to do and it would be a tremendous benefit for the county. So now we want to see how how can, how can we, how can we balance that with with other needs and other benefits to the county and and make it all work for our citizens?
The funding side of it is an important component. Is that a deliverable that wasn't requested with the feasibility study?
You know, I can't answer that. I if if uh, you know, did did I not make that clear enough? Um, I I I I don't know. I guess, yes, let let's assume that I that it's my shortcoming because usually it is, but uh um, it's it's something that that we would like to have seen and probably wasn't, weren't clear enough to ask for because they, you know, did did a lot of stuff for the money that we that we put forward in it.
Yeah, and when I look through the the report, the feasibility report, it seems like you asked um a lot of the, you know, friends of Benzie Valley, you know, the Sheriff's Department, Villalley Tivana, and most of them, they say, yes, we would love to have this, but we don't have a suggestion at all about how to pay for it. They want, would love to have the coordination. It's to coordinate and avoid duplication. Don't mess with things that are being done well. So I see that. Um, but then in the Sheriff's Department, it says that I don't know. I think there are too many township and not too many township and city parks. We don't need to have the county having influence on.
Yeah, and I think there the Sheriff's Department, I think Homestead Township reacted negatively to this. Um, most of the others um reacted positively. And you know, and my response to that is that, you know, honest questions and honest answers. That's that that's what they think and we've got some education to do, but uh um that's there in the report because that's what they said.
Which I appreciate. And I didn't know if it was, you know, is that the general? Or did you ask like one person?
Um, the
Across the board.
I I doubt, I doubt that they took a vote on it internally. I I think the uh um, the survey folks that from from Networks Northwest would have contacted them with with this list of questions.
Okay.
It was kind of up to each each uh each of the stakeholders who answered it and and how they did. Um, but you know, but I, you know, the if you were to survey a whole lot of people in Benzie County, you'd get that answer from some. So I do appreciate that 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 that's in there.
Yes, I do too. And then you also alluded to Manistee that they might be going a different route.
The the la- the last I heard from them, they were using a uh small part of their allocation from ARPA to uh to start funding a uh some some version of a uh Parks Parks and Recreation Director, but it wasn't clear to me or or to them exactly where they were going with it. We had, we had contacts early on and said at at really at the suggestion of the uh Michigan State University Parks and Recreation Faculty who said, you know, this is a, this is a bigger issue than than one little county in Northwest Michigan. You should look regionally. So we contacted them and they were like, well, you know, maybe we could do that. But I, you know, it's
Okay.
That that turns out to be a another longer term thing that, you know, where do they want to go and where do we want to go? They're they have a huge interest in trail connectivity and and want to have some way of working with us on that, you know, as we get Betsy Valley Trail to Thompsonville and some other things that uh, so so they they want to work together with us. How that comes out is is going to be a question there.
Yeah, I just wanted a little clarity on that since we alluded to it. Okay, thank you.
Yeah. Lot of, lot of questions still.
Hate to labor the funding portion of it, but when you re-contract Networks Northwest on quite a few matters. And um, when you fund a feasibility study, one of the big components of whether something's feasible is how you're going to pay for it. I would offer that um would it be possible to go back to Networks Northwest and 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 convey that the Board of Commissioners wanted to see at least a segment of portion? They have to have the data of what people are doing. I I would like to see that in here. What they propose is funny. I know it's not included. Um, and maybe they uh didn't understand that that was being requested, but but to me, that's a very important part of a feasibility study and without it, it's hard to make decisions. So.
I I will, I've already indicated to them that I'll be back to them with comments from from this board and and from ours. Um, they they did, they did include the uh funding from the from the other counties that they that they interviewed. Um, the difficulty is that nobody is exactly comparable to us. So I I I think that the uh um, the the assumption was and and is that that in the be, in the beginning years, and any, any of this would be, you know, a general fund responsibility and as and if if it is to ramp up to to a, let's say, a larger department, then then what are the funding sources you can bring in for that? And and that's and those are really the questions that we wanted more information on and and at at your request and some others, we'll definitely get back to them and say, you know, how um, what's what are, what's your input on how we can make this work?
I agree. Except I'd like to see the budgets of all these communities. I know we're we're the Ad Ball Group, but we have some really good folks that do handle what's going on now. So all I see with this, and this is just my opinion and I'll quit, is once it starts, it continues to grow. And it grows to the point that you can't control it. And that's a big concern for me. If Networks Northwest can show us how it can be funded and stably funded, because everything I read in here is this is where it's going to start. It's going to grow from here. And to me, that that's a community issue. Do they really want to spend this kind of money? And, you know, so anyway, that's, that's.
And and you won't get any disagreement from me on that. I believe it is a community issue and I believe that if we start it and and prove that it's valuable and should grow, then the community will support the growth. If if we start it and it's just, you know, perceived as as one more public job, um, then it'll, then it won't grow and the community won't support it. So it's a, you know, it's it's one of those things that that I, you know, I I agree with you. If if we if we don't do it, we'll never know if 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 it works or not. You know, we we know that there's a a need and a desire for for more um, more coordination. We we know that there's an absolute need for somebody to handle all these. more coordination. We, we know that there's an absolute need for somebody to handle all these, all these grant things. But, you know, can, can, can we grow this in a, in a county of our size? That, you know, that, that's a question that, that we, we really truly won't know until, until we do this. And my, my feeling is that it's, it's a great service to our people. It's worth, it's worth taking a shot. And it, and it's worth long-term counting on the, on the county and our elected and appointed boards to keep control of it and make sure that it's a benefit. We can't do that. What's the government here?
But by the study itself, Ed, it shows that starting in year six, the annual budget decreased by as much as a hundred thousand dollars.
That's listed specifically as a hypothetical. But, but, but yes, it's saying that, that if and, and the hypothetical is really, do, do you get all these townships together where, for example, they're saying, we want to apply for this grant? And we don't have someone to do it. So, you know, we're going to, you know, in, include the overhead for the, for the county director in, in the grant, or we're going to pay fifty dollars an hour for the county person to, to, to do the upfront work or, or whatever. So that you've, so you've, you've built in some, some some funding and, and you've established the, the need and the desire for these, for these townships to use that. Because if, because if they don't use it, then, then you don't need the other personnel, obviously. So, so yeah, that's a, that's a hypothetical. I would, I would like to see that happen. But in terms of what, what you're saying, and what Commissioner Sauer is saying, that doesn't happen unless the need is established and the desire is established. It, it can't.
On a positive, Ed, it's, I strategically, I believe that if someone doesn't wake up every morning thinking about a specific task, it really doesn't get moved forward. I think your group as volunteers has done a great job up till now, but that's the reality of it. The, the other side of it is, is where's the greatest need? If we could find the money, where's the greatest need for that money? You know, and, and all of this has to be vetted through yet. So.
And to Commissioner Janice's point, you and I have had the conversation of the concept of a community development person. And with, with that concept in mind, knowing that this person could serve the EBC and grant writing needs and the land bank, I would, I would be curious what priorities Parks and Rec, and I'm hoping to drilling down on this. And it's, it's a need that we want to meet. But if it's paired back to under the umbrella of a community development first, what would be the top needs of Parks and Rec that could be met by a bigger umbrella? That would be my question.
That's a terrific question. We discussed this to some extent last night. And, and one of the things that, that several of the Park and Rec Commissioners stressed is you cannot hire this without defining it carefully. If you give the person too many responsibilities, you're setting them up for failure. So while, you know, and, and my, my point has been, I don't want to come in and negotiate against myself. I think we should have a full time one, but I'm not in charge of the budget. I know, I know the county has a whole lot of needs. Now, if I was a planning commissioner, I'd probably come in here saying we need a foot rights and, and all that stuff. So, so if, if that, if that's the decision, and, and I recognize that as, as a real potential that this is a shared job with, with some other responsibility. The, the, the only thing that I would say, well, two things, I guess. One is if, that's probably a step in the right direction and, and great, let's take that step. The second is, let's be sure we don't over overburden this person to the point that they can't get anything done. So carefully defining. And so you're, so your question is, you know, which, which of my seven things that I listed, would I, would I get rid of to pare it down to three is, is exactly on point. And that's, that's really a conversation we want to have with y'all. And, and we're not really asking for any, any action today. We hope to be, be involved and able to speak with you all with over as you get into your budget discussions and, and work with you on this. And just wanted to make sure that you had it, had an opportunity to ask questions and, and we'll answer any that we can.
Thank you.
Thanks, Ed.
So, Ed, but just let's be clear what the task is going forward so that you guys aren't on a treadmill going nowhere. Do you understand what we're looking for? After you have your own discussion, you have a chance to vet it more thoroughly. You understand concerns that we have outstanding that when you come back to us, we're looking for answers?
Yep.
Okay.
Absolutely.
All right.
Thanks, folks. Appreciate all that you do.
Thanks, Ed.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Go on to Mr. Malon. All right, Tim.
Oh, shoot. Forgot we restarted the computers.
Introduce yourself to the rest of the folks, would you, Tim?
Tim Malon, CEO for Cherry Capital Communications. And then we've been tasked to work with the county to plan fiber through all the unserved and underserved homes in Benzie County.
All right, everybody on YouTube can see your presentation now too. And everybody has a copy.
So we started off, the first program was 1.5 million from ARPA, which we quote, coined Internet for All Benzie. That's what the state is referring to these projects as. We want to align ourselves with the state. And then shortly after that contract was signed, we immediately went into a Robin application. Robin was $230 million of state ARPA money that was set aside to be awarded to observe the unserved and underserved as the state has identified that need. We'll talk a little farther about how we can identify more need and accuracy of that. So conversation, last conversation we had with the MIHI office yesterday was approval of the redaction pieces of the application we put in. It was 198 pages. About half of that was, well, it's 198. I don't know what the percentage was of what. It was a great effort that was done in a very short timeframe. You put together a great team, the County Administrator's Office, Mitch, your consultant and Grove Benzie were instrumental in making sure all aspects of that application were met and checked off. Since we're at the redactions piece of our application, that means they're going to publish it, which means that we're in the winning number of applications. I understand there's 28 winners. And we've been notified we are one of them. We don't want to go too public with it because we want the MIHI office and the governor and all the elected officials to take credit for their efforts. And then we can go public with, with it. But I heard today that it's going to be announced this week. So.
You've already made a.
I was going to say, we are.
The Telecommunications Association published it last week. So I guess I'm, I'm not the, everybody's anxious to move forward with it. What that did is your 1.5 million is now worth 10.5 million. So that's that multiplier that we talked about earlier. Cherry Capital is putting in 3.75 million. And then the, the state dinged us on 40 homes. So that brought our 5.1 million dollar request down to 5 million, 60, 40,000. So we, we get, we told them that there would be no problem. We'd still be able to meet other requirements. That's, I mean, you guys, your leadership should be applauded and the efforts that we did should be applauded. So.
So, Tim, I'm sorry. Do you have any questions now?
Yeah, go ahead.
On that last slide, what are the green highlighted areas? A, B, C, D, and E?
Yes, that, that's where we are focusing our attention for the first year effort.
Okay.
It, it will be dynamic. We kind of shade an area and we look at it. I was at Inman Townships meeting last night for the Metro Act application. So we can do a road commission permit. And surprisingly, they offered for a discussion on next month's meeting, 30 acres where we can house a fiber distribution center. We can house our inventory as we work in that region. And so I was really grateful. They, we're very excited about this project. So A is going to move closer to Bendin Road and Lake Anne Road. So we can take advantage of that. So every conversation we have, we adjust the map, but that's what the yellow or green was trying to outline A, B, C, and D, and E. E does give us a little bit of challenge to get to Weldon Township. We're actually going to follow the Manistee Benzie County line. So we've got to get Manistee Road Commission permission to use their side of the road. We have to get those townships under the Metro Act. But that's not too complicated. Actually, the move over to Bendin Road with our fiber distribution may provide us a way of getting to Colfax Township. And those two townships from a need perspective are probably the two greatest need areas on multiple levels. So we, we are focusing on that while we build out other areas. Robin itself, we took the Michigan database and primarily used it to identify the households. We were, we felt we were a little short on the number. We're just slightly over 2,000 households. And we wanted more to try to make sure we got enough points. But we did use about 300 households that were generally close to what Michigan said were unserved and underserved from the merit study and incorporated that in. It obviously worked. That brought us up to 200, 2,377 homes. And there's over 4,000, I think it's 4,200 households will be passing. Now, households that we pass, if they have somebody else and want fiber, we're more than happy to service them. But they're not included in the funding module. That's where our private money comes in. We can make sure the accounting shows where public money is used and where private money is used. From a miles perspective, it's 204 miles of fiber. So we'll be putting in 50 to 60 miles a quarter, which is a pretty ambitious goal. We've already signed agreements with two family-owned provider contractors. They're very competent in mainline fiber that we have a good history with. We know their work is quality work. And we are looking for a couple of contractors to help us out with the drops to the home. It's a different skill set, different contractors, but we'll continue to look on that. We're hoping that by August, we'll have the plows in the ground on at least, you know, two of the segments. But we can move forward.
And there's, and in our community, there's other areas that are underserved or not served at all that are beyond the list that you show.
Okay.
Well, that's more of a question. And if there is, how come they're not on this list?
Okay, yeah. So there is a ARDOF was a 9.2 million dollar, a billion dollar program that Charter or Spectrum, Mercury Broadband and Cherry Capital were, were winners of it in Benzie County. And so the state removed those areas because they're already funded to be done. Mercury Broadband is done. That's the blue area. Mercury Broadband has done nothing in Benzie County yet. And we're kind of watching them carefully. Cherry Capital and one other company called Highline are the only two companies that have met the first 20% two-year commitment to ARDOF in the state of Michigan at this point. So we're hoping the other 10 vendors, oh, nine vendors, because Elon Musk was, his award was taken back. Hopefully they, you know, we hope the other nine are successful. We don't want any tainted image from the feds on Michigan. So we're hoping all the vendors are successful. But even Spectrum hasn't met their 20% goal yet.
So in your consortium, I understand what PFN's role is, and I think I understand what merits is. What, what role is Eclipse playing in this?
Yeah, we, we have reached out every month asking to have a conversation and to find out what role they want to play. Do they want to play a role as managed services? Do they want to be an internet service provider? What role do they want to play from an expertise standpoint? I had, there are some things I do know Chris doesn't want to do. And, but we haven't heard exactly where he wants to fit in it. So I've, I've reached out to him. We'll continue to reach out to him. I think as the plows are in the ground, the fibers being built, the Robin win, that may motivate Chris to be a little bit more, he's, 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 he's an individual that thinks things through to a, a real degree. And so I'm not surprised that he's taking his time thinking about it. It's a new, a new concept of two ISPs working together for the last mile. And so I, I appreciate like, we, we had early on in December and January, some really detail of how the companies match each other. And then conversations kind of stopped. And we keep on reaching out.
In the Robin grant, did I hear you say on the front end of your presentation, that was slightly over 5 million?
Yep. The final number should be 5 million, 40,000. It is a grant. So we have to fund a quarter's worth of work, which is, which is fine. The Treasury did do a report that said any expenses prior to the award that were specifically for the project can be reimbursed. So what we had to do is we started ordering 350,000 feet of inventory and electronics so that it was already in our yard prior to the award in order to meet that 13-quarter deadline for getting it done. And so far, we have over 1,000 pieces of electronics that have come in and we're at about 180,000 feet of our 350,000 feet coming in.
And so it's been awarded? Are you going to hear about this this week?
We're, we're to be, we're to be, the public notice will be this week. And then there's a 45-day comment period, and then the award should occur sometime in August. Every indication is, you know, unless there's some big surprise in the comment, that, you know, we won't be awarded. So it's, I'm comfortable that. I mean, and we're, we're planning all of our efforts towards the fact that the award will be there.
We're trying not to jinx you.
No, no.
All right.
No, we're, all, all the conversations we've had with I just went blank on his name, Frederick.
Chris?
Right. Oh, no, Eric. Eric. His office have been very positive, very clear in their expectations and where they're at. It, it's, they, state of Michigan did a good job in hiring him to run the MIHI office and the team he's put together of eight seems to be doing their due diligence very well.
And because it's a reimbursable grant, it sounds like every quarter, you have the capital to be able to front the money and wait for reimbursement?
We estimated about 600,000 per quarter that we'll we're budgeting for, and that shouldn't be a problem. So the next two steps really prepare us for what's coming up. And that is beads. But the first step in beads or anything that's going on, the mapping itself, which I'd like to see more effort towards is to make sure every household, every serviceable location is identified in Benzie County. If it's not on the map, it can't get funded. And all of our reporting is based on what's called the fabric is the map, the pins on the map. We can't, we can't get funding if there isn't a valid pin. And so that mapping issue, I'd like to work with the team going forward by end of year that we're, we're engaged in the mapping, whether it's a township level or county level. But it's really important that the needs of Benzie County be reflected in that map. Everything is tight then. It's not a complicated process. It just takes, you know, time to read, get a, get an FRN number because you got to be in the federal database in order to make a comment. Even the county needs an FRN number. And then you're allowed to make challenges. You're allowed to get your input into the system. Get your input into the system. Um, two providers in Michigan. Between July's reports and December's reports. Claimed they did eighty thousand households in two counties, forty thousand each county. Uh. The state is suspicious of that, you just don't move that quickly with wireless. And, uh, that cost the state of Michigan four hundred thousand dollars in federal funding. So that map is significant, so our one point eight billion was lower to one point four billion. Because of those two providers. So having the right data in there, there is some over reporting in Benzie, but it's minor, you know. It's, uh, even Spectrum did a really good job in Benzie County of the reporting.
On the subject of Spectrum, and Katie, maybe you can answer this better, but have we heard from them, are they applying for Robin Grant also?
Don't know. But well, once the official, they, you know, in our conversations, they're focused specifically on our application. Uh, the. We should know by the end of the week, who else was it, whether they made application, we'll know who won the application, you won't know who lost.
Right.
There's a hundred and fifty-four applications that came in for one point three billion dollars. With only two hundred and thirty million to be allocated, so. Um, no.
And they have not told me.
They've not been in contact with you?
No.
It'd be, I, I don't know how we can. Obviously, their information's all on a volunteer basis, but it would be helpful to know how this fits in. With meeting the total need of the community, not just the areas that Tim's identifying. We, we could talk about that offline, who can contact them?
Well, but correct me if I'm wrong, part of this funding though is not to duplicate efforts.
Right.
So if Charter would have put in an application for same locations as Tim. They wouldn't have awarded both. And, um, from my previous conversations with Charter. They were just expanding from where their Ardo left off, so they're not picking up and going other places. They're just growing from where their Ardo left off.
Okay, so an example I would use is Lake Township. I think there's still some underserved areas there, but that was awarded to Spectrum, I think.
I, I don't know what location you're talking about, but I know they did get a bunch of Lake Township, yeah, through the Ardo.
Yeah, so our, uh, Spectrum was more the north. West side, a little bit in the central of Benzie. In the southwest side was Mercury Broadband. Uh, so Mercury is the one, we have reached out to their CEO. Uh, we had some conversations six months ago. Uh, to find out where they're at. I know the activity I see in my database is along ninety-four, so they're focusing on the southern part of the state. Uh. And we'll see where we can help them succeed, I mean, we want everybody to get on fiber. And that's the goal, the state is ninety-five percent of the households connected to a gig capable network, which. Does beg to differ that Charter is not symmetrical, but I don't know what's gonna happen with the next round of funding. To replace COAX with fiber. Uh, that's, that's an unknown under. So a lot, a lot of unknowns left in the discussion that we need to keep that discussion active, um. As we go forward. The next piece that really affects the county's ability to improve their budget. Is to this digital equity. It is really a difficult thing to talk about. Uh, even my high office is struggling with what is meant by digital equity. And essentially what they wanna do is make sure that every household is prepared to use the internet. I mean, do you have a proper router? You have a proper computer. You have the knowledge base to actually use the internet. You know, uh. Uh, to save money, to shop, to, yeah, interact with the government, uh. Uh, telehealth is a big thing. Uh, we got an aging population, and if we can do more. Uh, first responders come to a home, if they're connected to fiber, they can get immediate assistance. Uh, from a doctor with proper equipment. So that's all under that umbrella of digital equity, everything else is building the infrastructure, which is what we do. Uh, we, I, again, part of that conversation is at the E D C level. Is, you know, how to engage a group. Uh, to, uh, spearhead or. Uh, facilitate, making sure those needs are known. And that there's a vehicle available to get the information out to a group. So if a healthcare worker is at a senior home. Taking care of them, they can identify what that senior needs. Um, you know, are they still on a rotary dial phone? Uh, do they have a computer, do they have the means, do they have the. Wetherall to, uh, actually use the internet, are they competent to do that? And had that data come back so that when we're doing a digital equity grant to help. Improve that lifestyle situation, that we have the data collected, and that has to be done. Over the next six months. So. Uh, and that's two point four billion dollars sitting out there for that kinda money, so. This, this is not small money sitting on the table, and we should take full advantage. Uh, for everybody. Uh, digital equity just outlined some things, I mean, I was kinda surprised, three hundred and fifty-four thousand households don't have a computer. Um. Six hundred thousand homes don't have an internet subscription. Um, I mean, it's just amazing, the amount.
Michigan or nationwide?
Yeah, this is, uh, this is, I think this was Michigan, these were Michigan numbers, yeah. I pulled off.
That's just Benzie County.
No, not Benzie County, yeah. Pretty soon that number will be improved. Uh, is there any other questions, uh? But you have it.
Tim, how are you going to, um, do the mapping so it's more accurate? So we count the households?
Yeah, so that is, uh. Following the FCC. Uh, mapping software. Uh, if you inquiry, how does a county? Do that, uh, so key words would be FCC, E D C, and mapping, those three words, and then add county to it. Uh, it'll, it'll bring you to a page, it gives you step-by-step instructions of what to do, there's fourteen steps in it. Um, I can, I share the link with Katie, uh. And then that, that would be applied to the townships to, to do it. And what you do is you know where houses are, I mean, you have it on your tax rule. Uh, there are ways or information that's available that you can do comparative to it. Uh, you're able to extract that data out into a, what's called a CSV file, and then you can compare your tax rolls. With that, takes a little bit of Excel knowledge to do it. Uh, but it's not overly complicated to do, and then make sure those homes. Uh, as an example, we built two hundred homes in Leno County. Uh, the state challenged us on sixty-eight of them, uh, sixty-seven of them, we won. Uh, the last one, we didn't win because the house didn't exist. In the fabric, so it will be in the next reporting, you know. It's our customer, but the fabric didn't have the house, so therefore it had to be thrown out. Um. So, yeah, they, they, the state used some kind of math. Uh, algorithm and figured there's no way anybody could have done Northport in the middle of nowhere. And we had just completed the project, so, you know.
I just wanted to understand how those would be. Absolutely, uh, you know, accurate numbers so that it, that would impact.
Right, and that, that would be just a review.
And the responsibility of that is at the township or?
Township, county, and individual, in individual homeowners can do it too, they can log in and say. Try to find their address and say. I, I'm, I have a PIN, but it's on the wrong piece property.
Right, I think many of us already did that at our townships or cities and shared that information. You know, several months back. But I just wanted to understand because looking for as many pins. As we have for that accuracy on that.
Right.
Um, my second question, just for my understanding again, the fiber that's going to be pulled, it's going to be. Um, universal access, so other companies.
Open, open access.
Open access on that.
Yep.
Okay, that was my understanding.
Yep, we're negotiating with a company out of Sweden. Uh, for their software.
Okay.
I think they're a little pricey, so we're negotiating still on the contract. Uh, but, you know, we'll. Uh, there's also, uh, Mitch brought to us a not-for-profit that has a package, we're revisiting that. And once the fiber is built and there's something to offer. Uh, that will be in place, uh, to allow that to occur.
And that would be symmetrical.
Yeah, everything we do is symmetrical.
Is going to be symmetrical.
We're actually, yeah, so the state's asking for a hundred meg symmetrical. Uh, we, we build networks at ten gigs symmetrical, so. We're, we're technology-wise way ahead. Uh, the, the state backbone that eleven companies use. Was just upgraded in the first six months of the year. Uh, from a ten gig backbone to a hundred gig backbone, so everybody is trying to quickly. Uh, make changes to, uh, get everybody on the internet. Uh, and be there to support them.
Thank you.
Oh, you have nothing to do with this, but is there a way to motivate Mercury? Cause that happens to be one of the area I live in, that they have the bid.
Yep, that, uh, all, uh, will, will, once Robin is in play. Uh, we'll actively pursue them to find out where they're at. Um. Like in Leno County, we're in. Monthly conversation with Point Broadband. So we, we all do talk to make sure. Uh, that everything succeeds, um. I just, I was waiting for the Robin to not be challengeable, comments until. Opening up that conversation just from a safety standpoint.
Yeah. Tim, if I remember right, um, reported much, much earlier, Mercury. May not even be pursuing our market at all, that, that may be available to somebody else, am I right about that?
Yep, yeah, if they, if they. The penalties are pretty small. Um, from the FCC, this charter gave up some of their territory and it was. You know, it was relatively nothing per household. Uh, uh, fine, uh, Mercury may come to that conclusion. Uh, they won a hundred and thirty-five million, they got some equity money of two hundred and forty-eight million. So they should be well-funded. But they just may feel that this is just too remote for them to move up here. Um, and stay in the corridor of ninety-four, which is economically a better return on investment.
Because this is, um. Drawing so much community attention and interest. It'd probably be a bit to our benefit to. Put something in the paper updating the community where we're at.
Yep.
You've done a great job in your written communication, and maybe if you could work with administration to do that.
Yep.
It'd be helpful.
Especially as part of the Robin, uh, once that's out there. Um, make that announcement, I, that's why I'm doing township visits. Um, that allows me at least to get in front of every township leader. I, I can get about three of them a month, just takes a while to schedule everybody's meeting. But, uh, yeah.
Yeah, I wanna thank you for the energy you've put into this community, by the way, it's, I know that you're working multiple communities, but. You certainly have made me feel like we're high priority.
Question, on the digital equity component, so that's an educational effort.
Yeah.
What is, what is, did I hear you say six months? Uh, what is the timeframe on that, because it can't be in perpetuity.
Right, yeah, so. Uh, beads. Uh, probably will not be awarded until. Second quarter, maybe third quarter of twenty twenty-four. But the rules are gonna come out at the end of twenty twenty-three. And then the application will probably occur in the first quarter of twenty twenty-four. But what you wanna do is you wanna start collecting data. On all those relationships, focusing on telehealth, education. Uh, remote jobs, uh, there's a whole. Series of, uh, quantifiable. Data you can collect.
So that's not a, a rabbit component, it's a.
It's a beads component, yeah. Yeah, Robin, you know, we hope will be awarded. They're hoping early August, but they said it could be as late. As, uh, end of August, depending on the comment period.
So it's a data collection task as well as an informational task?
Cause what, what digital equity is gonna want is for you to have a plan as how do you address it? You know, how you, how do you facilitate getting the information in? And then how do you? Propose correcting it or addressing that problem? Uh, it could be a, uh. Yeah. We've thought about it that if, if. Was that the end of your meeting? Didn't hear a referendum for that.
So we do have specific goals and objectives, say by December twenty-four.
Yep. Yeah, I, I.
For the educational.
Application's gonna occur probably in early twenty twenty-four, so you wanna have a structure put together. For that, um. Um, and telehealth is the big one, um, the industry is saying. Instead of broadband driving things, telehealth is really gonna drive the reason for fiber. Uh, that's becoming a role. Uh, and we have engaged, uh, an author, um. Uh, out west to see if maybe he can put together a digital equity, telehealth. Type of two-pager. It's really a difficult subject, I mean, I have a difficult time expressing it because. There's just, you're kinda guessing what, what the feds want, and then the state hasn't said what their rules are yet, because they're still trying to figure it out.
Yeah, what I've heard you say about digital equity is that. That's part of the, probably the scoring process for the grant, so it's, it can't be an afterthought, it's gotta be part of your presentation.
Yeah, even in the Robin, we added that component, that we will be working on that, we're trying to identify the needs. Uh, that was the other two hundred thousand, that was to Mitch, that. How that's allocated, don't know, but we knew that money was out there, so we kind of attached that to the digital equity side of things. Um. Because it, it takes it out of my pool and puts it somewhere else.
Ready? Okay, thanks for your time, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So Zoom keeps crashing, um. Not our, not our stuff. And so I guess it's up to you, we can restart it again and see if we can get through the rest of the meeting.
Is that a requirement for us to be meeting?
No, we have public.
No, so we don't have to, um, but there, there are people watching, I can see that. So. We can scrap it, or we can restart again and hopefully get through the rest of the meeting, it's up to this board. But Zoom.
Restart again.
Take a break, please, if we can.
Zoom keeps crashing us.
We'll be back shortly.